For Monday, October twenty eighth, two thousand nineteen. Can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Condit.
Here.
Councilmember DeRocset.
Here.
Vice Mayor Rhino.
Here.
Councilmember Klein.
Here.
And Mayor Viera.
Here. Next, we will have the invocation by Jim Stockel, I believe it is from, I got it, Harvest Pressutarian, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
God, we acknowledge your greatness and your goodness, and we thank you for our community, for the businesses and schools and neighbors and leaders. Pray your blessing on those today who are fighting fires and serving others, especially those who are serving from Series. Protect them and grant them success. We ask for your hand of guidance to be on this meeting tonight, for all those who participate. We ask that you would grant courage and grant wisdom to those who decide, and we pray in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jim. We have no presentations this evening, so we will move to Citizens Communication to Council on Matters Not Included on the Agenda. While the Council welcomes and encourages participation in Council meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the City Council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the City Council from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the City Council. Citizens are entitled to address the City Council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. This time, I have one speaker card. I'll call that individual first. It's Justin Volkman? Bachman? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Justin Bachman. I'm the Midstate Regional Compliance Manager with CFAC, which is the Construction Industry Force Account Council. We're a nonprofit organization dedicated to ensuring state and local governments' compliance with the California Public Contract Code. I'm here today to offer our resources and assistance with any construction-related procurement questions the city may come across. We are well-versed in all the areas of the Public Contract Code. This includes but is not limited to advertising requirements, bid thresholds, force account usage, emergency declarations, project accounting procedures, and the Uniform Construction Cost Accounting Act, which the City of Series is a participant of. Our services are free of charge to elected officials, county employees, contractors, and the general public. You can find more information about our organization, as well as my contact info, on our website at www.cifac.org. Thanks for your time today, and I look forward to assisting you if needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Lee Brandt, Series.
I was just curious what's going on with the illegal fireworks, the fines and stuff like that. Have they been collected or, you know, whatever? I mean, because I know there was a few of them out there, but...
Do we...
Are the people paying the fines?
Do we know what that is, or maybe that we can look and see?
We don't have that information handy, but we can, the council's interest, we can put a report together.
Okay. We don't know off the top of our head, but we can research it and report back.
Yeah, I was just curious, you know...
Well, all of them have been sent out. We just don't know how many have been paid.
Right, yeah. What's, what if they don't pay? I mean, do you take them to court?
We did have a hearing officer hear some of those matters, gosh, three weeks ago or so. I don't think we've gotten a final report from that. Oh, we did get it? So, we'll provide you with his, he details what happened in each case.
Well, those are the appeals case.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Shirley Rogers, Series, California, Camellia Court. I would like to ask if you could request the police, the code enforcer, to dress a little less Gestapo. When he comes around and leaves citations or notices, he looks a little intimidating with the black jacket on the outside and police across the back. If he just dressed a little bit different, he might be a little more acceptable. People are complaining, and people are going to get upset, and there's going to be trouble. Just a warning.
Anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Renee Ledbetter with the Series Chamber of Commerce. I just wanted to let you know that we have nominations open for our annual awards, community awards program. So, if you go to serieschamber.com, we're selling tickets for our installation dinner in January, so I'm giving you advance notice. Also, the nominations are open for Citizen of the Year, Young Citizen, Volunteer Business, all of those awards are on there. So, we encourage the community to go online and cast your nominations. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
I just, Don Donaldson, I just ran into a lieutenant fireman out there that had his daughter with him. She's a freshman at MJC, and the last time I seen her, she was playing fifth and sixth grade basketball at Westport. And then, here, his sister, been a long, long time. I coached her whenever she was at Carroll Fowler, and I just recognized him a while ago. He was playing. And, you know, it's amazing that you can see these kids. Richard Collins played whenever. It, 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 it's, it makes me feel happy when somebody comes up and hugs me like she did, said, "Coach." I'm not a coach, I'm a babysitter at that age. But it's a good feeling to have these kids wherever they see you, but then you see the fathers, that lieutenant now at the Fire Department, and look at Richard and look at these kids. This, 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 this makes you really feel good about the community and the good kids. This makes me feel good. That, that, that's a good feeling to have these kids grow up like this. I'm happy for this.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the Council on a non-agenda item?
Jean Yackley, Series. Tonight, I guess we're going to go through some of the, later on, through some of the codes. I might be wrong, nine, ten, nineteen, something like that. And I just wanted to refresh, in one of the areas had to do with noise, and one of these issues was in the Series newspaper the other day. He's here. And it said, "Loud party complaint ends in arrest." Now, some of the City Council don't have those problems that a different group of us do, and it's very nerve-wracking to go on for days and months and years, and these things go into the early hours of the morning, and they're just a nuisance all the way. Anyway, it's in the newspaper dated October twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, on a Wednesday. I believe they're referring to the Friday before this was printed. It says, "Refusal to comply with repeated orders to turn down his loud music resulted in the arrest of Marco Gutierrez, thirty-two, of Series, late Friday for disturbing the peace. Officers had to visit the home at thirty-five hundred Attica four times through the night for reports of loud party. His first warning came at six P.M. Gutierrez was issued citations during the second and third offenses, seven forty-eight and ten twenty-three P.M. On the third call, Gutierrez stated that he was throwing a party, and there's a little misspelling in there, and didn't care about getting fined, and didn't, didn't matter to him how much it cost. At one thirty thirteen A.M., officers were called back for a fourth time when the victim signed a citizen's arrest form." This kind of stuff goes on. I brought it up for I don't know how many years now. It's not just a couple, it's many years I brought this up. So, one of the decisions tonight has to do with this and time factors and stuff like that, so I'd really appreciate if the City Council considers the good answer for that. And one of the other issues I still like to find out from the city attorney is what's happening with the sidewalk vendor law. We getting anywhere with that?
We did. We, I have it if I can find it.
Yeah, so is it finished?
Yes.
It'll be presented as part of the MuniCode update.
Pardon me?
It will be presented as part of the MuniCode update.
Okay, thank you.
John Warren, Series. Good evening, City Council members. I have a couple of issues. Number one, in relation to the noise thing, I had an issue in my neighborhood, probably the first time in thirty-three years, that I've actually had to call the Police Department because the noise was so loud, and they responded, and the officer took some appropriate corrective action, and I was very pleased with the outcome. So, it does appear that we're getting some resolution in that matter, as I've seen progress. Recently, I filed three different complaints on three different addresses within the city, and it had to do with building code violations. And I received an answer to one of those, and this is what the answer was. "Your request, number such-and-such, has been resolved with the resolution per code, comma, this issue has been addressed, period." Any of you understand that answer?
No.
I certainly didn't. Okay. So, I'm, the, the system doesn't work unless the complaining party receives some type of intelligible answer as to actually what happened. I mean, this doesn't say anything. It just says, "Per code." What does that mean? There's nothing in the building code that tells me whether they had to take the structure down, or if they went and applied for a permit, or what took place. So, that's a concern that I have. The reporting a problem and receiving no answer is not a solution to the problem, okay? One doesn't know what took place. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else?
All right, I forgot to ask. Does the same fine stuff happen, or does that apply to, like, New Year's Eve? Because New Year's Eve is going to happen all over again, you know, with the flying fireworks and stuff like that? You know, it's like, eh...
Is it the same fine schedule? Is that what...
Yeah, you know, it's like...
Yes. Fireworks are illegal year-round. It doesn't matter the day.
Period, I mean, you know, so, come New Year's Eve, I should put my sign out? Because the Fire Department made me keep it, you know, because I tried to return it and say, "No, just put it out next year." But, so it's going to happen again?
They're illegal. They're subject to the same fine regardless of when they're lit.
Oh, okay, all right. I was just curious.
Anyone else like to address the Council on a non-agenda item? Okay, and then we'll bring it back to appointments and boards and commissions. We have none. Conflict of interest declaration. Is there anyone on the Council that would like to declare conflict of interest on any of the consent calendar, one public hearing, or new business item? I would like to declare conflict on item number ten. I'm a business partner with one or two of the applicants, so I'll step down from that item. With that, we'll move to consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual Council member or the public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by roll call vote. At this time, is there anyone on the Council that would like a consent calendar item pulled for further discussion? Okay. Hearing none, is there anyone in the audience? Okay, I'll bring it back to the, I'm sorry. Did I hear someone? Nope, okay. I'll bring it back to the Council for direction.
I moved to adopt, one, two, three...
Hold on one second, Mike. Did someone say something? You would like six pulled? Do you want five A pulled as well? Don, I can't hear you. Can you come up so you can tell me which ones you want pulled? Just six, okay.
Okay, I'll move to adopt, one, two, three, four, five, A, B, seven, eight, and nine.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Condit.
Aye.
Councilmember DeRocset.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhino.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes five, zero.
Okay, item number six, resolution number two thousand nineteen dash one oh nine, accepting the well number thirty-four rehabilitation project as complete and authorizing the filing of the notice of completion. Mr. Donaldson, do you want to come up and ask your question?
I don't know. I don't know what well this is. Is it the one out at East Gate? The well out there that's letting all that water out and pouring it down the drain for the last two months, off and on?
Well, thirty-four is on River Road at Central.
It's not the one that's out there that's...
Well, thirty-four is on River Road at Central near Lyons Park.
Oh, well, then, that, that well out there is the one that's letting all that water down in the drain? I don't know where that water's going.
It's being rehabilitated as well.
It's, I'm sorry?
It is being rehabilitated as well for water quality issues.
So, it's going down the drain?
In that particular case, in East Gate, the water goes into a storm drain system and ends up into the storm drain basin that's on the north side of Hatch, and then it ultimately gets into the river.
Why is it going down the drain? It's no good? It's...
It's not potable, meaning it can't be drank. It has to be rehabilitated and tested and meet state standards before it can be put into the system.
It's been a long time, isn't it? I mean, there's a lot of water that's been going through there.
Unfortunately, it takes a significant amount of time.
Is it the chemicals from the golf, from the soccer fields that's going down into? No. Is it the river? Is it the water that's coming off of Gear Road, the dump, that's going in the river that's coming down, and you're pumping that water back out?
No.
No. Where is that dirty water coming from that we can't pump good water out of that well? There's a lot of water for the last three months I've seen come out of that well.
Be a long dissertation on water quality. I don't know, Mayor, if you want to...
It just, it's just the constituents in, that the water picks up as it percolates into the ground and then gets pumped out, which is why the surface water has been such a critical priority for us.
I, okay. It's just that my water bill is so high, and I see that water being down the drain. It's, you know, it's...
Well, I'm sorry, if we gave you that water to drink, then you'd get a violation from the state saying that you're drinking water that you're not supposed to.
I don't drink the water out of that. I buy my water in bottles. Thank you.
Anyone else like to comment on this item? If not, I'll bring it back to the Council for direction.
Move to adopt resolution number two thousand nineteen one oh nine.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Condit.
Aye.
Councilmember DeRocset.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhino.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes five, zero.
We have no unfinished business, so we have one public hearing item. Public hearing to consider introduction of ordinance number two thousand nineteen dash one oh five-three, amending in their entirety titles one, two, three, and four of the Series Municipal Code.
Thank you, Mayor Viera. This evening, the first partial group, so Group One A, as the Council recalls, we broke the entire municipal code up into groups to try and navigate our process through the review and ultimately adoption process. So, per Council direction, we have brought, have noticed and brought titles one, two, three, and four of the Series Municipal Code for replacement in their entirety. So, these are the first group. The, as you recall, titles six and eight of Group One have been separated out, and we'll have a discussion on that later this evening. But the titles that are included have been modified and adopted to the last public hearing with Council's input and is now ready for consideration. We'll notice in the ordinance, legal staff did recommend some language in the ordinance to allow for any minor editing related to cross-referencing or anything else that may change in the future, so that we don't have to come back for counsel for anything that is just a cross-reference or spacing or something along those for the final formatting as this gets to the codification process. So, the bulk of it is completed, obviously. As we finish the rest of the titles of the municipal code, there may be some cross-reference numbers that may change, so that is included in the ordinance to be able to allow for, you know, minor adjustments of references to ensure the document is internally consistent. So, as we're doing this in pieces, you know, likely as we change other things going through the rest of the document, we want to ensure the easiest process for making those minor amendments. And then, lastly, as it's set up for a first reading this evening, provided the Council provides that direction, the second reading would happen at the next meeting, which would be on November twelfth, and then, so the earliest effective date that the new code could be for these four chapters would be in December. Staff is recommending picking January first as an effective date, or any time after that, any further out would be helpful for the overall codification process as we put the whole document together. So, again, January first is our minimum staff recommendation. If you wanted to go further out there, that would be helpful as well as we tackle the rest of the MuniCode update. Some available for any questions you may have.
Vice Mayor Rhino?
On the changes, rather than it say not any, not, it says any and all, I can see where it'd be okay for formatting and things like that, but I'm afraid that when it says any and all necessary changes to the revised titles, including but not limited to, that that could potentially mean some words could get in there that could change the meaning.
I'll defer to the city attorney. They drafted the language, so if there's language that maybe...
Any and all.
That could, yeah, and it's meant to be broad, just to try and catch everything. To answer your question, yes, that could happen. Obviously, our intent is not at all to do that.
Correct, but we've had public hearings on it, and I would hate to see that something get changed, that we did not have a discussion that the citizens could have concerns with. So, is there a way that it could just say, you know, the edits and, without it saying any and all, so that it would cover those cross-referencing like you mentioned?
Sure.
Can we do that?
Yes, yes, I can be down.
And then...
Could we, just to, just to clarify, so if, if on section five of the ordinance, what, if I'm hearing you correctly, so the top of that second page of the ordinance? So, it says, so section five reads, "The City Council authorizes city manager and city attorney to make any and all necessary edits and changes to the revised titles, including but not limited to formatting, numbering, and related revisions," without, if we added, "that do not change the meaning of any section?"
Substance or meaning of anything.
Substance or meaning? If we add that?
That would be fine for me. I'm not sure about the rest of the Council, but... And then, I thought we had a discussion a few times about the adoption of the different sections, the different titles, that rather, we don't want to wait until they're all done and then codify them, because there were some that we felt needed to be taken care of sooner. So, couldn't we just do it this section, January first, and then don't include or later? Because, like I said, we've discussed at least twice at the staff, at the Council level about not wanting to wait until we were done with all of them, because this has been such a long process.
So, this is the staff's, again, we're looking for your direction. You tell us what dates you want it to be effective. So, again, from a staff perspective, minimizing both cost and, and work on a staff load, the later the process, the more cost-effective it is for codification. But if Council wants it sooner, the soonest, soonest it could be would be December twelfth?
Well, no, the January first is okay, but I, I didn't like or later, because I didn't want, that, that's too wide open.
Again, that's what we're looking for Council direction, so we, it's the first...
And I thought that was what we discussed, was there would be like a group that we could do groups, and then as we had a discussion on them, we could, we as a council could decide how quickly we wanted those to be codified. I, I thought that we had discussed that a couple of times.
That's correct. I'm looking for your Council's decision, is what I'm asking.
Right, without the or later, because or later could go as far as next June.
You could pick a date, if you want a different date.
Well, is January first realistic?
Of course it is, but the codification processes will be additional cost. That's all we're asking, that's all we're saying.
But I think we need that.
We can have it effective and not codify and wait for the codification process as well.
Well, then we should do...
So, we're asking for the effective date. What that, January first right now would be the effective date of the new ordinance.
Okay.
For titles one, two, three, and four.
Okay, then I like the effective date of January first and strike the or later, but then when you look at the ordinance, doesn't it say section six that the ordinance will become effective thirty days from and after its final passage and adoption? So, that would conflict with...
But it's, that's what, that's what we're asking for you to clarify. Tell us the date. So, if it's January first, that would be the language change.
I'm okay with January first.
The ordinance should be...
For the, for the effective date.
That's fine. Councilmember Klein?
Nothing. They've, they've settled it.
Okay. Are there any other questions on this item before I put it up to the public? Okay, at this time, I will open up to the public. Anyone that would like to comment on this item, please come forth. Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Council for direction or motion.
Move to, oh, do we say anything when it's an ordinance?
I already did that when we did the other one, didn't I? By accident.
Oh, but can we have those changed?
On the consent calendar, you waive the first reading when you approve the consent calendar, so you could just make the motion.
Start number two.
On the consent calendar?
Okay.
Yeah.
So, motion to introduce ordinance number two thousand nineteen ten fifty-three with the change of... As we discussed with the city attorney about including but not limited, and that the effective date would be January first of two thousand twenty.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember, Councilmember Condit.
Aye.
Councilmember DeRocset.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhino.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes five, zero.
Okay, item number ten. Tom, do I need to leave the room on this, or?
Yes, Mayor, it's not a consent item.
Okay, item ten is resolution two thousand nineteen one twelve. Mr. Lor, you have a staff report?
Yes. Good evening, Vice Mayor Rhino and City Council. Tonight is our final phase of awarding our funding for the Community Event and Activities Grant Program, and we started this program, accepted applications in the month of August and September, and on October fourteenth, the City Council heard presentations from each group. We had nine applicants requesting forty-five thousand dollars. We have forty thousand dollars in the budget. At the October fourteenth council meeting, the City Council asked us to come back with a few different options, so tonight we bring that back for Council consideration to move forward that we can award these fundings. And we have three different options we brought back to the Council. Option A, to award nine grants of five thousand dollars for a total of forty-five, and we include a budget minimum of five thousand dollars, and for the additional five thousand. And option B, where we award everyone four thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars, and it will be a four-dollar savings to the city. And option C is where you give staff direction. So, we've set up the resolution tonight and to move forward how Council would like. After this event, once after the awarding, I'm sorry, the next step will be is issuing checks, once we receive all the W-nines from the different agencies that we award tonight. Next, we'll be posting those events on the city website, that the community will know about it. Also, we'll be working closely with all the events to make sure we see the most sponsorship and visibility. We have some signs that were printed that say, "Sponsored by the City of Series," that they can check out, and then ensure the awardee submits the post-event form thirty days after their event. So, moving forward, we're looking at directions tonight from Council, how to award the forty thousand dollars that was allocated in this year's, this budget.
Councilmember Klein?
Well, I just have a comment on this. You know, when this TOT tax was first presented, and with the amount that we were possibly going to generate, you know, my idea was to take a certain percentage over and above what we normally took in. We were bringing in roughly about $94,000 a year, and so anything over and above that was a certain percentage that I wanted to go towards Parkson Recreation for some of their activity. But this council decided that they wanted to form an ad hoc committee, and the ad hoc committee come back with recommendation for a community events activities. So with that being said, the only option that I'm willing to support is option B, which was what was set forth to begin with, was, was of $40,000. So, I can support option B.
Councilmember DeRosa?
Yeah, we got over $250,000. What was the TOT, Toby?
Yeah, that was fiscal year 1819, was, was just over 250,000. The budget for 1920, this current year, is, is 262.
And, and we're kind of a year behind. Obviously, we had some staffing changes and stuff like that, and so here we are, you know, this is before us today. These groups all believe, and they're, they're shooting for the $5,000. I think we should go with option A, and again, see how it goes, and maybe we don't have $45,000 next year to give away. Maybe it's only $20,000 from the TOT, depending on, you know, what their data looks like and, and how it actually did impact some of the things that we have here in the city of series.
I would agree with councilmember Klein, that we should go with what our original $40,000 was, because it was kind of a, we were going to see how it went, so we should stick with what that amount was. Councilmember Condit?
I'd be in support of option B as well.
Okay, is there anyone from the public that would like to address the council?
Money to be given away. M-O-U. Everybody understands M-O-U. In my program, I had to pay $5 for each child that played in my program. And now we've got money to give to the people that volunteered their time for 33 years to go out there and hustle and have no fundraisers whatsoever for these kids, and charge them $40 to play. And then the M-O-U come in and said, hey, you gotta pay, each one of your kids has gotta pay $5 so they can play. Now then, we've got the money that we can give to the people that's got the money. It's, uh, it, 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 it's just not right for me. You know what I mean? You go out there and you bust your, for these kids. And the Dolphins is the same way. We don't have any Dolphins swim team anymore. We've got 200 kids, it's not, it's just like the little girl out here that's a, a, a freshman at, and she played. We've got kids here that played, and I was okay. I didn't have to have your money. I didn't want your money. I had the money the kids paid for, and that's what they paid. We never asked for a dime from the city to run the program.
Well, Mr. Donaldson, this is TOT money?
Yeah, I know.
And I don't believe we had it when you ran your program?
I know you didn't.
And when we, for many years...
And I didn't need it then either, I'm sorry.
No, but for many years, we were using the money that we were getting from the TOT to help supplant our budget and to keep some of our employees. And then when we recently took it to the voters and they agreed to increase it, that was why we now are in a position that we feel we can try to help out different organizations within the city, because we have additional money from the increase.
Well, that's okay.
Okay.
I, I don't, you know, you can give your money away if you want to. What I'm saying is whenever, why did you want me to pay you and, you know, for these kids? Why did these kids have to pay $5 to play in a program that wasn't costing the city a dime to run?
Well, I'm sure it was costing the city a dime. I'm sure that, other than you, you providing your services free, I'm sure that there was some type of city involvement as well. But that was a long time ago, and as you know, things have changed.
Okay, you're right. It's easier now to get money, and it, it depends on what you, what you do, and you can get your money, huh?
Thank you, Mr. Donaldson.
Sorry.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the council?
Why, why are we giving money to all these places that make money? Why don't we give it to the schools or to organizations that need the money, that don't have a fundraiser? The arena, for example, it's a very nice man that runs the arena, but he charges, there are all these places are going to bring in money, their own money. Why are we helping him?
Well, the idea of the committee was that if we were to give these different groups money, that maybe, that they could increase either their marketing or whatever to get more people into town.
They're there to make money. They're going to do that without your money. So I would be very careful who you give the money to, and give it to the people in the city that are going to do the most with it, that don't have money coming back from whatever they're doing.
Well, we had...
It only makes sense.
We had, we had nine, nine different organizations that applied.
And over half of them are going to have people paying to participate in that event they're having. So they're going to be making money. They're not just doing it out of the goodness of their heart. So couldn't you find places that the money would be better spent and would provide more for the people? You have this tax money from, I assume, motels.
Motels.
It's like with the cannabis money. Suddenly, you're going nuts.
Well, it, it is from...
You start thinking what you're doing with this money.
It, it is from the motels, and the notices went out, and anybody could have, anybody within, that had people within series could have applied for it.
If the people, if people didn't apply, then maybe you need to reword it, but it's like you're in a hurry to give this money away. Why?
Well, we had nine groups that applied, so...
Nine groups of which half, over half, are going to make money. They don't need that money. Is, is Shane, is he really that desperate for $4,400 when he's going to have an arena event that's going to bring in how much? And you think he's not going to advertise unless you give him 400 or $4,400?
Well, there was a specific application, and they had backup and everything else.
I, I'm not here to argue with you. I stated my opinion, and it's up to you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rogers.
Can I say something real fast?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Councilmember DeRosa?
Shirley, just, this is all general fund money, and this had gone on for a number of, I think, our conversations years. There was 12 people within our community, I think 12, that were on this committee, trying to find some ways that we could give back to the people that actually are trying to get things done within the city. And I understand what you're saying in regards to the dollar figure and stuff like that. We can pay for, you know, stuff out of the general fund only. And again, we decided to take this amount of money out, but this, we didn't take the money out last year, so that money went straight back into the general fund. And now we have this money that nine people applied for, and it's a trial and error thing, I'm, I'm assuming.
Is it sound good, I would say?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. We could say none of these groups get the money, and we're just going to put it back in general fund.
Would you be more comfortable if you, if you give them? Oh, you're going to just all submit?
Ms. Ledbetter?
Hi, Renee Ledbetter with the series chamber of commerce. And just to clarify, we were one of the groups that applied, and we hope to make money at our event, which is the barbecue festival, which has grown. We took a few years off, mainly because of my fault, because I broke my leg and couldn't coordinate the event. But we're trying to bring it back, and we rely heavily on events. And the chamber is an organization that works on a shoestring budget. We are very limited in our funds. We do events to raise money, to keep the chamber doors open. We partner with certain entities like Diamond Bar Arena for our egg luncheon, which is 100 percent, all the proceeds from that event benefit our scholarship foundation. So unless we have events that we can operate to keep the chamber doors open, the chamber of commerce wouldn't function. And so this is one of those examples of, yeah, we hope that we make money, but that money is invested back into the community through programs, through events that we put on to benefit the entire community, and to market and promote our business community. And that's our role as a chamber, to do that. And this is one of the ways that we are looking to help sustain the chamber. Granted, we are very appreciative that you're offering this money through this grant program. It costs us about $30,000 to put on the barbecue festival, and we have seen that it takes us about 15,000 to 18,000 for us to actually make a profit. It takes 15,000 to 18,000 in fundraising for us to actually get a profit out of that event. And it's a lot of work, a lot of volunteer hours go into it. So I can certainly appreciate and understand her concern, Ms. Rogers. But again, yeah, we, we've done this event without assistance from the city, but it is definitely greatly appreciated. So any which way you vote tonight, we certainly appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience?
Can I do it again?
Yes, you can.
Is any of this money going for kids program? Is there anybody asked for the kids program? Do we have any kids program?
There's series youth soccer, and...
Did they ask for money?
They did.
Series earthquakes?
And junior golf.
And junior golf?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and that, that's all?
That is it, yes.
Well, that, that, and I keep on going back to, to, to the basketball, and I, I didn't have any fundraisers because the, the, the kids paid the $40, and that was enough. That was, that was enough. I didn't want the kids to go out and sell candy because they didn't sign up to play basketball to sell candy. We had no fundraisers whatsoever, and we made our own, and only, and I'm going to say this, and only, series kids could play in this program. I didn't, nobody from Delhi, nobody from Turlock, and I got in trouble a lot of times for not letting this happen. Let me tell you, Cambria had a daughter, and she lived in Turlock, and she wanted her baby to play. No, you can't. You don't live in series, you don't go to series schools, you don't play basketball. I had somebody else had a daughter that wanted to go to Virginia Parks. You don't live in series, you don't go to a series school, you don't play in a program. This is series. The taxpayers in series have these gymnasium, and they pay taxes for these gymnasiums, and they're the ones that gets the first choice to play. That's what I did for series. And the baseball, they said, you can't coach out here anymore. How come? I put the lights up, I put the T-ball field in. I'd done all this for the, and the guy that come from De Nair was the president, he said, Donaldson, you can't coach out here anymore. How come? You didn't let my son and daughter play for Walter White, so I'm not going to let you coach out here. But I protected what I believed in for the people in series. You are series, you pay taxes in series, your kid is going to be the first one to play in the program. Nobody else. So that's what I mean about the kids. We need, we need more kids, and we need more people thinking about the kids than we do marijuana and everything. Here, we've got three kids now that don't have a dad because of marijuana up there. Got shot, killed. We, we have to, we, we have to do things for the kids, because look at this. Look at the kids that's coming up. That's what we want. That's what I'm proud of. That, that's what I'm proud of, but we don't have it anymore. What, one, two, golf, and, and, and soccer?
But again, they had the opportunity to apply. These are the ones that chose to apply.
Yes, but we don't have no Dolphins swim team, and all these kids, for years and years and years and years and years, we had that swim Dolphins team. We had basketball for the kids. What do they do now? Smoke dope?
I think we still have basketball. We do. He coaches. We still have basket, we still have basketball because councilmember Condit is a coach.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And you pay the coach there, or the guy that runs it, $15 an hour. I never got paid a dime. How did that happen? How does a series...
No, you were very, you were very generous, Mr. Donaldson.
Well, it's just aggravating to know that this is happening, and they say, well, yeah, this is series. Oh, no. And you pay the people to run your programs. Do you see what I'm getting at?
I, I understand you, yes.
Do you understand what I'm getting at?
Sure.
You don't have to have a lot of money to run something, you just have to have the willpower to go out there and get it done. Flag football, $7, and the person that kicked me out of the baseball let the two women that run the, the concession stand, the most honest people that you would ever, ever, ever want to run a concession stand, had enough money to run a football, flag football program for $7. $5 was insurance. They're the ones that ran it whenever I ran the, the, the program out there, and I charged $40 to run, and we didn't have any fundraisers. $40 was enough to run that whole baseball, because I had honest people running the concession stand. If you're honest, you don't have to have all this.
Okay, well, your red light came on, Mr. Donaldson.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience? I'll bring it back to the council for a motion.
I'll move to adopt resolution 2019-12, or 112, option B.
Is there a second?
Second.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Condit?
Aye.
Councilmember DeRosa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhino?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Motion passes five, zero, four, zero, excuse me.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now, I guess, we could...
Matt, would you grab the mayor, please? Would you grab the mayor, please? 1B. Mr. Wells?
There we go. Thank you, Mayor Viera, members of the city council. This evening, we continue on our, our journey of updating the municipal code, as we know this is a quite the arduous task, but we are, we are making progress. So as council knows, we did, and listed the chapters here for the first four, first introduction reading for the adoption, so that is well on its way. Second reading will be at the next meeting. So this evening, we're going to revisit the two titles from the group one, so that would be titles six and eight, so you can see health and sanitation, and then animals, the two. So again, just for a reminder, here's the grouping, and I'll talk about group three and suggested change in the schedule, and breaking those two pieces, that group three into two parts due to some state law changes. We'll discuss that at, at the end of the meeting. But what we wanted to do this evening is revisit with the full council, title six, not, not the whole title, but the specific area that the council was deadlocked on it with four members present on the waste wheeler discussion. So as we've discussed, the code as it exists today indicates that waste wheelers, garbage cans, shall be kept and maintained at a location upon the premises which is screened from public view. So again, got some examples here of all over town that show it not meeting the code in both locations. You can see just to the left of the van in that location, as well as that location. So three areas from... So three areas from around town, obviously, it's a pretty significantly violated section of our code. It is something that generates a tremendous amount of phone calls and work for code enforcement, looking for direction from council as to, basically, the two options. First option, to leave the code as is, and it continues to be a citable violation, and we continue to cite it, and it's a process for code enforcement. Or seek direction from council as to changes to that language. So with that, look for any questions you may have.
Okay, are there any questions or clarifications? So it looks like Mr. Wells is looking for direction on what we wanna do with the waste wheeler or continuation of the discussion, I guess, all four of you had when I was not here. So I'll ask if there are any questions, and then I'll open it up to the public as well. So, Councilmember Klein?
I really don't have a classification here, but I will tell you, after what was printed in the Series Courier, I was approached many times about my opinion of this thing, matter. And with that being said, the direction that everybody gave me, that it needs to be left at the clear standards we have, that it must be behind a screen and away from public view. So that was what was expressed to me because of the way I stood before. So I can agree that, with that being said, that it should be out of the public view.
Vice Mayor Rhino?
And I will still say what I said at the last meeting, that I too believe it should be kept and maintained out of the public view.
Well, since I wasn't here and didn't comment, my feeling is that I think that it should be revised to have the waste wheelers off of the street, off of the sidewalk, off of the driveway, but I'm okay with them up against the home.
So just to clarify, you would be okay with this location?
Yes.
But not that location?
Well, it's up against the house, so I would be okay with that as well.
But this would not. Just wanna clarify.
I would prefer to see it on the side of the house, but again, I wouldn't get that technical.
There's the challenge, you know, from an enforcement standpoint, making sure. It's obviously clear right now, but wanting to make sure that, understanding kind of what you're saying, and visual examples.
I'm assuming they're not using those garages.
That's what it would appear, so.
So Mayor, you would be okay with it anywhere in the front yard, as long as it wasn't on the street? Basically, any paved portion?
Correct.
Okay.
So do you wanna open it up to the public?
Councilmember De Rosset?
Yeah, I didn't read the Series Courier, so I don't know what, Jeff, you printed, but I know that I stated that, you know, I think that it's gonna be a little bit overkill if we make him put it in the back. I mean, some of those houses you'd see, I think the ones that are developed over on the other side of the freeway, they don't even probably have a way to get it to the side of their house. And then what happens if there's a fire or something crazy, and we, you know, made these people put this on the side of their house where it's an obstruction for them if for something bad happens? You know, it's a slippery slope. We don't have enough code enforcement, because I drove around today prior to coming here, and they're everywhere. And so, yeah, we could find them, there'd be a citation. He'll be doing that, they will be doing that for a long period of time. So I agree with the mayor in regards to, you know, if the garbage, it's illegal. If the garbage is overflowing, they can't have the garbage overflowing. It's against the ordinance, correct, Toby?
It's correct.
So that's a tacky look. I completely see that. That person needs to be fined. But if it's over the side, out of the way, you know, that's what I would support.
So, Mr. Wells, just for clarification, if we were to keep it as it was and to start enforcing that, if someone were to build a little pony wall and paint a lime green garbage can or a giant pink one on there that everybody could see, there would be nothing we could do as long as their garbage can was behind that wall?
Correct, as the ordinance states, as long as it's, the cans themselves are screened from public view.
Okay. Vice Mayor Rhino?
Typically, even in the newer subdivisions, aren't the side yards wide enough that you can put a garbage can behind there, behind your side fence?
Typical setbacks, five feet.
Okay. And if there were a fire and someone was in their backyard, I would hope they would have wheels on their waste wheeler, and they could wheel it out of the way. And true, we do have a lot of waste wheelers out there now, but that's because it hasn't been enforced for so many years because we didn't have any, enough people in code enforcement. And I thought when we had the discussion on code enforcement that we use the example of the waste wheelers and how they couldn't get to them because they didn't have enough people. Well, now, we do have, maybe not enough still, but we do have one more person. And I believe that if they were to do a quadrant by quadrant, they could get it all manageable again. You have to go from it not being enforced to let everyone know this is the rules, and you need to enforce them. And I think if you do kind of a sweep, like when they do a drug sweep or whatever, that will get everyone's attention. But I think for us to change it because there's so many out there, well, that's really our fault because we haven't been enforcing it. That's my opinion.
Anyone else for open it up to the public? Okay, at this time, I'll open it up to the public. Anyone would like to comment on this item?
I would like to be removed from the lazy list. I'm having a special gate put in front of my garbage can and waste wheeler recycling. I am now just a disposable and a handbasket. Lawn for lazy.
The thing of it is, is if you start enforcing it, word is gonna get around, and people are gonna start putting their cans behind the gate on their own. So that may solve the problem right there. If you get, you know, code enforcement to enforce it, you know, word, word's gonna get around, and people are gonna start putting them behind the wall, or behind the gates, or in the garbage, or in the garage, or whatever.
John Warren, City of Series. I believe the ordinance as it's written should remain the same with the waste wheelers out of public view. However, the homeowner chooses to do that, putting it on the side, dragging it through the garage like I do, and putting it in the backyard so it's handy for the wife to put the garbage out, because I don't always get that chore done. One thing I noticed in the new Title Nineteen, the redline version, the proposed version, on page thirty-nine of fifty-eight, it referred to trash cans.
Correct. It would be corrected. We were waiting for this direction before we clean up those edits.
Well, that's gonna come out of that and go over to six.
The, well, there's two references. We, depending on what the council's direction here, it would be cleaned up, because there is a cross-reference there that would likely just stay here in six for the waste wheelers, and would be removed from Nineteen. So that there's no ambiguity, whatever that word is. So it's not, so it's clear, so that the citation and process would live likely just here in six and not in Nineteen.
So that's what the direction I think the council should take. I think there's a lot of folks that feel both ways. And obviously, part of our problem as a city is lack of enforcement with code enforcement. There was a period of time when you didn't have even one person really out there doing that particular function. And so, to be fair, quite possibly, I know that the city doesn't always like to send a mailer out with the trash collection or with the water bill, but maybe stuff a flyer in there to remind the folks, hey, this is the rule, and it's going to be enforced, as well as all the other portions of the code that have been neglected over the years to remind them of what the rule is, and they should pay attention. Thank you.
Alex Avalos, City of Series. And I agree with the gentleman before me that it should be enforced. And I believe that some of the pictures presented, they don't look that bad. But when people leave their garbage cans out, they have a tendency to leave other trash and garbage in their driveways around their house. And by putting the trash cans in the back is one step towards cleaning Series up.
Nate Ledbetter. As a person who sees a lot of homes as a realtor, I can tell you that when we go out and show property, if garbage cans are out front, it really, even though it may not bring property value down for that significant, that specific home, when you have a whole neighborhood where all their garbage cans are out front, it really doesn't look good. And it may have an impact on property values when you drive through a neighborhood and all you see are trash cans out front. So from a real estate perspective, and I'm just talking for myself, not the full community, I think it would be better to have those either on the side or behind a fence. And people need to take pride of ownership, not only in their properties, but in our community. And I think maybe that's the message we need to be sharing, is, you know, I grew up in Oakdale, and I really love Oakdale. It's a great community. And I see a lot of pride of ownership, not only in the residential communities, but in the business community. And when I come back to Series, I think, wow, I wish we could pull more people together to have a pride of ownership for our community. And so I agree that the garbage can should be either off to the side or behind a fence, but I would really hate to see them all parked in front of the garages, whether they use them or not. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Hi, Amber Manis from Series. We have an elderly neighbor, and she doesn't have a gate that she could, and so we wheel her trash can out for her. And if we had to put it in the back, then we would have to go through her garage. And so that would, we just automatically take it out for her. And so if she's not home or something, we wouldn't be able to get to it for her. So that's just a consideration. But she keeps it on the side, and it's never overfilling.
So you're okay with the side, just not in front of the driveway? Okay.
Does she have a car, or does it, can it go in her gar, in her garage? Okay, because I know some people keep it in their garage because they can just not have to go into their backyard to put their trash away, but... Oh.
Okay. I'm probably the one that's got the most fines in Series. My last one was seven hundred and some dollars. I don't care what you decide on, as long as it's for everybody. If you want me, if you say don't, your damn garbage can's gotta be in the back. It's gotta be in the back for everybody. You got two garbage cans right out there on the outside of that building. Come on. If you guys can't do it, why should we do it? Them garbage cans have been out there. Every time I come up here, I tell you, them garbage cans are out there. Treat me the same as everybody else. If people down the streets got their garbage can, don't just come out. Coley, he knows right where, he probably knows my address, but, you know? But here's the thing. Don, you can't have your motorhome hooked up. Yes, I can. There's no code says I can't have. Well, they come out and told me to undo my motorhome. Now all the batteries are dead in my motorhome. Don, you can't park by that fire hydrant. How come I can't? You can go down here to Lawrence, and you got a parking place right in front of the flower shop, and you got marks where cars can park. Nope. A cop come out and told me that sixteen foot from that fire hydrant, you can't park by it. Well, how does the city put parking places by fire hydrant, and I can't park in a residential place? I don't understand that. Why do I have to do things and the city doesn't? Come on. I'm, I'm, I'm the same as you. If you tell me not to park in front of a fire hydrant, don't you park in front of a hydrant? You tell me not to do something, I'll go along with whatever you decide. But you're gonna have to decide, and everybody's gonna have to follow it. And I'm the one, the worst one. He comes out there, Azavito comes out there and says, "You're growing weeds." Rob Phillips says, "You can't put no more than fifty percent concrete." So I left a passageway there, and Brian Nichols gave me some flowers in a pot, and I poured them down on there, and I swept it. Flowers come up. Azavito said it was weeds. I guess he's taking holoculture or whatever it is to tell me that it was flowers. I took the lawnmower, and my wife got a little mad. And now then, I've got forty pound felt roofing right over the top, and I'm killing all the weeds that grow up with that forty, I just drag that forty pound. Every time there's a weed that grows up, I just pull it down there and let it kill it. Tell me what you want me to do. An ugly, ugly waste wheeler garbage can. I can remember whenever four people was on top of a garbage truck, running down the yard, picking them up and putting them in a garbage can. I can remember whenever there was water coolers right in front of the house. We've come a long ways. We've got people come out, pick up your garbage, and put it in there. Ninety pounds of garbage, and it's thirty dollars a ton. I could put the garbage in the back of my truck, and it would never weigh a ton. I'm, it's cheaper for me to give that waste wheeler back to you. The ugly waste wheeler, because if it was nice looking, nobody would want me to put it in the backyard. Think about this, and come up with a conclusion. I would say, I would say, put them in the backyard. And I'll be the one that can't get a wheelbarrow through my backyard with waste wheelers in it. I'm gonna have to move the waste wheelers to get my wheelbarrow by there. But I think it's better. Everybody has to do it. Period. No excuses. Or bill something like Charlie said, bill something in front so it'll hide it. Thank you.
Rennie Meyer, City of Series. I'm not gonna give an opinion either way, but I would like to agree with this gentleman that if we do continue with that ordinance, I know several elderly neighbors that don't know that they're not supposed to have it out there. So if we can give some sort of a warning before we start enforcing it. I know it already is an existing ordinance, and people should know that, but I don't think a lot of people do. But before we start handing out fines, maybe we can put an insert in the bill before it starts getting enforced.
The warning is already in the code as well, so it's required to get a warning before a violation as well. That's already into the existing code.
That you get a warning before they get fined.
Correct. And we generally go one step further to that. So as it's handled now, we normally do like a flyer to the whole neighborhood indicating, hey, in case you didn't know, there's a problem here, then a warning, then a citation.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I'll bring you back to the council for further discussion or direction. So again, my preference would be that they need to be off of the street, off of the driveway, and I'm okay up against the house on the side.
And I would like it left as is.
I'm the same as the mayor.
Mr. Klein?
You know, because my first, my first thing was, as long as it's against the house, you know, I look at East Gate and the side yards. Even though what I just said, where I supported it, I still feel strongly on my, on my, my first thought, and I say, as long as it's beside the house, I'm fine with it. my first thought, and I say, as long as it's beside the house, I'm fine with it.
And beside the house would be where?
Like the left-hand side of that picture right there.
That's acceptable? Is that acceptable?
That's beside the house? Well, it's beside the fence. But the mayor was okay with that?
That was my, I mean, that's my first reaction. That's acceptable. The one on the right's not acceptable. Because, because you can't close your lid, but the one on the left is acceptable.
So you're okay with it in the front of the house in this respect?
Yeah, I, I prefer it on the side of the house.
That's in front of the garage, though.
Yeah, I, I would say, I would say on, on the side of the house on there, not in front of the garage.
This example versus this. Councilmember?
I would echo, uh, Mr. Donaldson's comments as well as Ms. Myers. Um, as I stated in the first meeting, uh, I would, I'm fine with how it is written. And that's where I would be.
So we've got two to leave it as is and I believe Mr. Klein's...
I said side of the house. I went, I, I...
Final answer.
My first inclination.
Okay. So three of you are indicating a change to the ordinance to, to remove the language of, um, complete screening. And so it can be along the side of the house. So we will attempt to craft some language that will come back for the public hearing to address that. With that being said, with our process that we have for citation with this change, are you wanting any changes to that overall process and, or we leave that the same in terms of citation? Right? So if somebody has it, for example, as we change the language to say it's on the side of the house as screened as possible from view, then someone that had them this way would be eligible for a citation. We, we would leave our process the same as it is today. Just want to make sure.
Give them a warning and then give them a citation?
Yeah, same. There, there's, there's just a step in this process. I want to make sure that we, we leave that alone and you're not looking for some other changes. I think I got head nuts at least three.
There needs to be a warning process, absolutely.
Okay. Yeah, that's what's written today. I just want to make sure that we're consistent with that.
Okay.
Okay? So we're good?
Mr. Donaldson, we given a direction. I mean, what, what would you like to comment?
So the direction, so you give the direction to discussion to still come back as a public hearing for adoption with that language. So there'll still be another opportunity for public comment before it became, you know, an adopted change.
Okay. Yep.
That's a good question. And that's what we'll have to work on, the language of what, what is acceptable. We, we may have to provide some examples on, i- i- as an exhibit to demonstrate what's acceptable and not. Yeah, that, and again, the language that is today is very clear. Crafting language to allow an exception makes for the difficulty in the enforcement, but we'll see what language we can come up with to help for these type of situations. Again, I gave three here and there's, you know, fifty different versions and varieties. And we'll try to see what we can do to craft some language for that public hearing. Okay. Moving on to Title, Title Eight. So the only item that was left in Title Eight, we have some cleanup language that we haven't addressed yet, but we will. Um, the one item that was brought up at that meeting, that was a two-two, uh, discussion was, um, a consideration for an outright ban on pit bulls. So that was one individual. That's the first time that I've heard that conversation from one, uh, one citizen. Um, but, so looking for kind of final council direction on whether we want to consider anything in the ordinance related to this or to move forward with the changes that were recommended. And we bring that back for final adoption. So look for council direction on this item.
Comments on this item? Did you guys talk about this before?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, we did. And it went two to two. There was two of us that said we could not really dictate what type of dog.
And that's true, but then we were going to have a discussion. We weren't necessarily going to out and out say you couldn't have a pit bull. We just wanted to have a discussion.
So there's, there's two options here. One, give us direction to leave the code as is. Schedule a pit bull discussion sometime in the future after we finish this mini-code update process. So that would be kind of option number one. Option number two, you're not, you know, finish it as is and we're not interested in a conversation about pit bulls.
Well, I'll give you my comments because I wasn't here, I guess. First of all, inherently, I have a real problem with this on, on multiple things. One is, again, I, I think this, what's the issue with the pit bull? I'm assuming they're violent and that's what the concern is. I doubt that it's barking or anything else. And I go back to, it's not the pit bull, it's the owner. So, I mean, and it, don't take this comment the wrong way, please, whoever's out there. But that's like me saying, I don't like white people, okay? So I don't want them. Well, you know, and I can say that I'm white, okay? So don't, don't take that the wrong way. But I don't think we up here should be saying because there's a violent pit bull that we should ban them all. I think each owner needs to be responsible for their own pet. So I don't think it's my responsibility, just like we had the discussion here that the fast food places were offering sugary drinks and so that we should ban or get rid of sugary drinks because the parents don't want to tell the little five-year-old that they can't have the sugary drink. That's just my opinion. So I think, you know, we can deal with pit bulls if the pit bull is a nuisance or a problem. I don't personally think we should have an outright ban and get rid of somebody's pit bull. That's my opinion.
Does anybody else's opinion change?
Mr. Conrad?
Uh, I would agree with the mayor's comments. It is the owner's responsibility. I don't think it's possible to outright ban a certain breed of dog. And as we discussed at the last meeting, that if a dog attack, it's equal responsibility for whatever type of breed of dog that attacks. Um, I was just curious. So is there a leash ordinance if you do have?
Yeah, that's already...
Okay. Well, then I don't see any changes there. I think that's very reasonable and the mayor's comments were valid.
Any other comment? I'll open it up to the public. Does anybody want to comment on this item? Okay, hearing done. Um, so there's two of us and I, and I don't know who, how the others felt about it, so...
Yeah, looking for, so...
Well, I was, I'm, I'm in agreement with the mayor. I mean, that was my original...
So three, we'll, we'll finalize the ordinance as is for. And then the question is, do you want to have a follow-up discussion on this? And I'm saying no.
No.
Okay, perfect. We will finish Title Eight and Title Six. And now we will talk about kind of the revision to the schedule with where we're at on everything else. So, um, here's the updated schedule as it exists today. So Group 1A, you adopted this evening, the, were introduced this evening, second reading will be at the next meeting. Option 1B, we just got your direction on to an out, and now enable 1B to be scheduled for, um, council adoption, uh, with a public hearing. And so a couple of options there on when you would like to do that. So I left that blank, that date blank. What we could do is just roll that into Group Two or Group Three, depending on your preference. So Group Three, we'll get into that. Oh, let me get to Group Two. So Group Two, uh, with the timing related to the changes from Group Two, we had to push that public hearing date back to get the notice out. So that did get moved to November twenty-fifth for the public hearing of Group Two. So that's Titles Nine, Ten, and Nineteen. So for Group Three, which is Titles Five, Twelve, and Thirteen, um, SB nine-nine-eight is a new, uh, law that's in place that changes our policies, our rules and policies of how we, um, deal with water and sewer and utility bill shut-offs. So the entire law has changed pretty significantly and we have to update our code to reflect that change in law. According to the law, it needs to be, our new policies need to be in place by February first. So as we started looking at that date and the changes that are necessary within our code, we were hoping that we'd be able to roll it in with Group Three. But looking at the dates, the implementation and working backwards from February first, we really need to move that and expedite, um, that, that specific title. So we, we believe the easiest way to get there, to have that effective by the February first date is to separate out Title Thirteen, which is water sewer, and just expedite that through the process. So we would bring it straight to a public hearing adoption for just Title Thirteen. Um, so we'd bring you a redline and a clean version so that it could be introduced as a first reading, um, on November twenty-fifth. Second reading would be on, uh, December ninth. Its effective date would be then January ninth. That would allow us enough time to implement those changes for an effective date on February first. So it's a little, it's a one-off for the rest of the schedule, but that's the only other option that we didn't think was tenable or really recommended would be to have a meeting, um, on the December twenty-third, which is normally canceled for this council. Having a city council meeting two days before, you know, Christmas, that's changing an ordinance on how we're, you know, shutting people off just doesn't seem like the right thing to do and not, you know, it's not going to be a meeting that most people are going to attend. I don't think the council's going to want to attend on, on December twenty-third. So this, we believe, is the, the best way to get there. Um, the only other twist to that would be a potential urgency ordinance, which I think would be, it's possible, the attorney can weigh in on that, but knowing we've got a, an, an option here, that would be our recommendation. So we look for council, um, kind of direction and concurrence that that is the best approach to get to Title Thirteen.
It's really not an emergency since we know we have to do it by that date.
Correct. It doesn't quite meet the criteria that you normally would find. You know, the findings that you need to make to say it's an urgency order. So we believe this is the best, uh, method to get there, um, for that Title Thirteen. Look for any direction or comments on...
I'm okay with that timeline. I'm fine.
Me too.
Good.
Do you think when you do another revised schedule, though, under, like it says, Group 1A, could you put in parentheses what chapter those are?
Of course, of course.
Thank you.
Yep, will do. I'll put that down on the bottom so you get the little, a little key there. So, um, that's what I just talked through. So I think with that, unless there's any other questions on the schedule, um, for Titles Six and Eight, what we'll do is roll those into the next group. So likely would be with Title Two and roll those together for final adoption. So Title Two would be the Nine, Ten, and Nineteen with Six and Eight. So, because Nine, Ten, and Nineteen still need a public hearing and then they would have an adoption and we'd put the five titles together for adoption. Make sense? Confused? Clear mud? I've seen heads nod up and down. So I think we're good. All right. That's it.
Hey, council member referrals. Is there anyone on the council that'd like to have an item placed on a future agenda? Hearing done. Uh, move to reports. I have nothing to report. Councilmember Klein?
I have nothing.
Vice Mayor Rhino?
Nothing tonight.
Councilmember Drosset?
Nothing.
Councilmember Condon?
Uh, yes. I'll be moving my office hours back to Community Center this Saturday and next Saturday, uh, between eleven and one. So I'll be here at the Community Center again. I hope to see you there.
Okay. We'll move to staff reports. Is there anything from the Finance Department? Nothing. Tom?
Nothing, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to take the opportunity to, uh, introduce the council. You may not all know that Aaron Slater is here in second row. He is, I, as the council knows, I named him as the Acting, um, Human Resources Director. So he'll be filling that role until a longer-term decision is made. So he's here this evening. I just wanted to let the council put a face with the name. Wanted to, um, mention what was sent on your calendars for this Wednesday. Frappuccino with a firefighter is going to be at the Hatch and Herndon Starbucks on Wednesday. This Wednesday will be the thirtieth from seven-thirty a.m. to nine-thirty a.m. And that is raising some money and awareness for, uh, breast cancer as part of the October activities the Fire Department is doing. Um, also Centennial Committee Meeting will be meeting, um, next Tuesday. Um, we are working with Alliance Club, working to try and get, uh, some volunteers lined up to start the construction on that project. Um, so we are, um, working diligently with several volunteers to get that schedule, uh, started and the construction as soon as we possibly can. Uh, and lastly, just wanted to mention, um, Monday, the eleventh, is Veterans Day. So the offices at City Hall will be closed and as noted in the agenda, uh, next council meeting will be on Tuesday, the twelfth.
Tom?
Thursday night, uh, from six to eight p.m., trunk or treat. It's going to be down on Third Street adjacent to Whitmore Park. Would like to see you there.
Daniel? Nothing? Crane?
Uh, Police Department will be out Thursday for the park for the Halloween. We'll have extra officers on the street for trick-or-treaters. Uh, we'll be targeting speeders and anybody else that's been driving unsafe with all the kids out and about. So we'll have extra staffing for that. We did some interviews last week, Chief and I. We are moving closer to our employment goal, but I will not take his thunder. I will let him talk about that when he gets back. That's all we have.
Okay. Kevin? Nothing? Uh, Supervisor DiMartini? Nothing? Okay. I don't think I missed anyone. So with that, we will adjourn to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be Tuesday, November twelfth at six p.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Friday night.